I'm calling to order this meeting of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome. The first item on the agenda with any action is proclamation. Our first proclamation is Silver High School Girls Golf Team Week from May 22 through May 28, 2016. Will Coach Begay, Assistant Coach Gabby Begay, and our state championship girls golf team please meet me at the podium?
Get up, girls! Get up, Bev!
Whereas Silver High School encourages its student athletes to excel in their endeavors and to follow the NMAA sportsmanship program to compete with class, and whereas the commitment required for student athletes to be part of a sports team includes meeting required grade attendance and voluntary requirements. In addition to attending daily practices and scheduled competition events, and whereas the Silver City Girls Golf Team has amended the New Mexico High School State Championship Golf Tournament four out of the last five years, and whereas on May 10, 2016, the Silver High School Girls Golf Team made silver high school history by winning their first state championship girls golf title at the Class A-4A New Mexico High School State Championship Golf Tournament in Roswell, New Mexico. And therefore, I Ken Ladner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, do hereby applaud the commitment of the Silver High School Girls Golf Team and their coaches and proudly proclaim the week of May 22 through 28, 2016, as Silver High School Girls Golf Team Week.
All I want to say is thank you for recognizing these young ladies. They've worked really hard. I've had them since eighth graders. So they've worked really hard all these years and they accomplished this making history at Silver High School. So I'm very proud of them and again, I'd like to thank the Silver City Council for recognizing us. And I also want to thank our parents for helping. They've been very supportive and I also like to thank all our people that donated and sponsored us this year also. Thank you very much.
Will all of our parents and those who supported the team throughout the year please stand so we can see who you are? I also have a special certificate awarded by the New Mexico State Senate. Hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to James Begay, Head Coach, Silver High School, for 2016 first Buffet A-4A State Golf Champions, Nancy Lopez Golf Course at Spring River, Roswell, New Mexico. The New Mexico State Senate hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to Gabby Begay, Assistant Coach, Silver High School. New Mexico State Senate hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to Sage Begay, Silver High School. Continuing, New Mexico State Senate hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to Rihanna Hermil, Silver High School. New Mexico State Senate hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to Chelseaa Medina. New Mexico State Senate hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to Ifmei? Is that right? And, New Mexico State Senate hereby extends its hauntiest congratulations to Brooklyn Betrieta. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We really appreciate Senator Howard Morales developing these certificates for all of The next proclamation is Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week, June 1 through 4, 2016. Will Tyler Brown, Chairman of the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo, Southwest Horsemen's Association Board President, Kim Clark, please come forward? Whereas the Southwest Horsemen's Association and Pete Carr's Classic Pro Rodeo will be presenting the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo in Silver City, New Mexico, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is celebrating its 26th year in Grand County in 2016. And whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo reflects the western heritage and history of Silver City, and whereas the Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo is an important step in the process of improving the economic viability of New Mexico in the sporting world. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim the week of June 1 through June 4, 2016, as the first New Mexico Bank Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week, and urge all citizens to attend and enjoy the rodeo and other events.
I just want to thank Mayor Ladner and the Town Council and the Town of Silver City for their longstanding support. The Southwest Horsemen's Association is a volunteer nonprofit organization. This is our fundraiser to help us exist throughout all the year on a yearly basis. And without our partners in the community and the support of the community as a whole, we would cease to exist. And we're here as an integral part of our history and we encourage everybody to come out, have a fun time, come watch the rodeo and support us so we can continue to exist. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public input. And I see that one person has signed up, Garridge Daley. And we'd just like to remind you that you'll have five minutes to make your presentation.
You've heard me speak before, haven't you? Mayor and Council, I just want to bring three things to your attention. I congratulate the golf team also. But I also want to mention that we have three young men here who helped clean up the Penny Park Butterfly Garden the other night, and Coach Harold Merrill's with them. And I'd like them to stand. I understand that each of these sports teams are asked to do so many hours of community service, and so Ms. Kristy Porter, who is also a mother here, called me and we made the arrangements for them to clean up the Penny Park Butterfly Gardens, which if you go by there now, it's spick and span and looks great. We checked all the irrigation system. Second thing I want to mention is that the Community Youth Building Program, of which I'm a part, will be working four mornings a week during the summer months, Monday through Thursday, from 8 to 12. And if any of you would like to come and join us, any of those efforts will be working at the Volunteer Center with the garden there. We'll be doing some recycling with Habitat Restore and down at the landfill to... Last Saturday, we were there and we diverted over 600 pounds of materials that would've gone into the landfill, hauled it back to Habitat Restore, and most of it sold by the time we could get it unloaded. So that's always nice. The third thing I want to mention is that I just had a quick discussion with Mr. Brown before the meeting and Mr. Marshall today, just recommending maybe that the Council, Mayor Ladner, invite someone from the Forest Service to come and give us an update on the catwalk. I think the community would be really interested in the progress of that reopening. So I just offered that as... We're integrally tied in with that park up there for tourism, and a lot of people miss that, a lot of us locals, and a lot of people who come here as tourists are anxious to know when that's going to reopen. So I think that would be... I just offered that as a suggestion to have them come. One last thing, Councilor Ray, we might be able to paint your rail this summer.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but you're not signed up to give public input.
I'm late.
I'm sorry.
I'm immediately late.
I'm really sorry.
Okay. Be back next morning.
The next item on the agenda is Council comments. Councilor Bedyston?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to the ladies golf at Silver High. I'm really impressed. There's a few folks in my family that golf, but I am not one of them. So I'm very impressed. And I'm very impressed by the coaches and it seems to be a family thing going on there all the way through. So congratulations to the Begays for all their hard work. I wanted to mention real briefly that the catwalk is opening this Saturday. I don't have the time in my head, but maybe one of the other council members does. But it does reopen this Saturday. So during the... The same time as Blues Festival is going on. I think it's those earlier in the morning. I want to thank Leanne Miskas, who is our purchasing agent. She did an excellent job preparing for and actually presenting yesterday at the Rogers Tax or Community Promotions Mandatory Meeting that we held. And it was really... She was really well done. I know that she's working hard and putting everything up on the website for those folks who are going to... That did attend the mandatory meeting and they can then apply for funding. And she will be sending out the updated files that we talked about at the meeting and an addendum to the RFP soon. If it's not done this afternoon, it'll be done soon because I know she was working on it. So she did an excellent job. I just want to rave a lot about how well she did and how fun it was for me to work with her. And I really appreciate Councilor Condos, some of her comments for clarifying as well and completely appreciate her being there as well yesterday. So thank you. And I wanted to remind folks that on Thursday, June 2nd, from 6 o'clock to 7:30, up at the WNMU Student Memorial Building in the seminar room, I'll be having a conversations with the Councilor, District 1 Councilor, because that's who I am, but anybody can come. It's all things ICIP, Infrastructure and Capital Improvement Plan. So we really want your input as town citizens as to what you think should be placed on the capital improvement plan. Remember, it has to be infrastructure projects, but all that will be discussed, what's currently on the plan, you know, what's come off the plan. Will be discussed by the special guests that will be attending, Alex Brown, the Town Manager, Jamie Ebrik, the Town Community Development Planner, I mean, Community Development Director, and Priscilla Lucero, who's Executive Director of the Council of Governments, Southwest Council of Governments. So please do come if you can. It's an opportunity to participate in the process that will come before the Council in the future. And now's the time to put your two cents in. So hope to see some of you folks there. And lastly, I missed doing lots of things on May 14th because I was attending the New Mexico Municipal League Budget, and just wanted to comment that the Municipal League's budget is run by the membership dues that all municipalities pay. And we kept it a flat budget this year because we're seeing reductions in the amount that's being paid because the membership dues are developed by the amount of grocery receipts tax that we receive as a municipality. And as that decreases, as the whole harmless, the food tax decreases, what we get for payment for that, 6% a year. Ultimately, the Municipal League will need to adjust and figure out potentially a new system for municipal dues, or they may have to increase them in order to continue to be the educational and lobbying arm of the Ball of all the municipalities in New Mexico. So I just wanted to mention that everybody's facing budget issues and our league itself is as well due to changes that have been made through the state. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone will hear tonight when our Assistant Town Manager, James Marshall, does a brief presentation of a big project report, the infrastructure is important in our town. And on the aspect of infrastructure, that I really want to begin to talk about in more depth is green infrastructure. That means using rocks, earth, and plants in a way that mimic natural systems to mitigate stormwater erosion and potential fire hazard. With that in mind, I invite folks to begin tuning into one of our community radio stations at 89.1 on Wednesday mornings for the next three Wednesday mornings at 9:15. There's going to be a series of programs on green infrastructure. And then following Councilor Bedyston's conversation with the Councilor, the following week on June 8th, I'll have a conversation with the Councilor to do a recap of the ICIP and then talk about green infrastructure. And then a culmination will be on June 13th and 14th, where a collaboration between the Town of Silver City, Stream Dynamics, and Funding Fund, the Southwest New Mexico Council termists, there'll be a hands-on workshop, and you'll see information about that in a variety of publications. So begin thinking, infrastructure is not just concrete, but rocks, earth, and plants.
Thank you. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I was asked to ask the public and the constituents on District 3 that they will be doing yard exposures and for you guys to clean your yards, as the Code Enforcement Officer Julia asked me to ask that. This weekend is going to be a great big weekend. It's probably the biggest weekend that we're going to have here in Grand County. And with all the bikers and people coming in, please, please be aware of the driving and of the walking. It's going to be very, very busy all over town. Also, kudos to the Silver High School softball team. They want to stay awesome. And I think they should've been here also. Maybe somebody forgot. Maybe Councilor Bedyston forgot. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. On June 13th, I will be having another public input for the Four Quivers. And it will be here again at 6 o'clock in this building. And there's Four Quivers here. We are all getting educated. I'm getting educated, and these people are getting educated. Is it going to be hard to pass by? Yes, it will be hard to pass. But at least we're going to try and see how far we can go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. Councilor Condo?
Thank you, Mayor. First to go along with what Councilor Ray just said, I am really interested in knowing what the people of my district think about the potential of having ATVs being allowed onto these streets. So if anybody wants to give me comment, that's great. But anybody that lives in my district, I really would like to hear what you have to say about it. I know I have my own personal opinions, but I want to make sure that I'm representing the district's opinions as well. I would also just like to thank the Silver City Fire Department. There was a fire in my district on Friday night, and it happened in a mobile home park. And it could've been disastrous. You could've lost the whole neighborhood. But because of the quick response by the fire department in getting that fire out, only one home was lost. It's unfortunate for that family, but I'm just really thankful for the fire department for how quick and how professional they are. Tomorrow is National Senior Health and Fitness Day that will be celebrated in Silver City. The Senior Olympics has partnered with the Community Health Council and the Youth Systems Abuse Prevention Coalition to have a senior health fair. It's from 10 to 3 at Cross Point Church, used to be Glad Tidings, which is there on the highway, Highway 180. And there'll be all kinds of vendors, there'll be some senior Olympics activities to try out, there'll be some really good food and some entertainment. So please come out and join those three groups in celebrating that day. And the last thing is, many of you have read the newspaper or social media and know what's going on at Silver High School. And I would just personally like to commend the athletic staff of Silver High School for coming together and taking a stand for their students and for their student athletes and for the community. And I know that what they're going through right now is very difficult, but I hope that the community will come together and also support Mr. Naffey at Silver High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Condo. Does the Council have any additional comments? The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does the Council want to make any changes to the agenda? Councilor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we remove item 11A from this evening's agenda, based on more correct information from town staff.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Ayman Smith to remove item 11A from the agenda. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Bedyston?
I second the motion as stated.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not being any, all those in favor of the motion to remove item 11A from the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, may say nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the May 10, 2016 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City of May 10, 2016.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilor Ayman Smith to approve the minutes of the May 10, 2016 regular meeting. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, second the motion as stated.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown, you have reports?
Well, we'll start with Mr. Marshall, talking about the Sustainability Plan 2030 first.
Let me just interject one quick thing. One of the things the Council wanted was to look at the different plans that the city has developed over the years. And so Mr. Marshall has been updating the Council at each of our meetings as to where the town is on these different plans.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So tonight, at the Mayor's request, we're looking at the Silver City Sustainability Plan 2030. And I think it's very important, if you get a chance, and I don't think I sent it to you, but Resolution Number 201336 is the resolution that adopted this plan. And we took an interesting approach in adopting this plan that we haven't really used in others that I've seen. And in their fours, I'll paraphrase a little bit, but we basically adopted the principles of what's in the plan versus adopting the plan as a hard set. This is what we're going to do. So as you go through the plan, it becomes more obvious why we did that. The plan covers a multitude of areas, ties in almost every area of function in the town government as well as issues that affect citizens in Silver City. The planning areas, there's nine of them, was emergency services, food, public health, transportation, and waste. In the environment sector was energy, land, urban, forest, stormwater, and there's two categories for that, and water. Each area assessed using a low, medium, high, medium, high scale. The plan is broke down into several sections, the first one being policy in action. And once again, I'm really giving you a brief just so we can cut to the chase to show that we actually have accomplished something, but I want to give a background on how we got there. The first section being policy in action. The policy is provide outreach, education, and support for the municipality and community on an ongoing basis, build, sustain, and leverage local or regional partnerships, identify vulnerable populations, incorporate flexibility of design into infrastructure development, allocate municipal resources necessary to adapt the municipal's physical design and Then we move down into action recommendations for the community is develop an informed community to assist in needs to adapt and sustain, provide emergency services, resources to efficiently respond to current demands, strengthen public health system with public-private partnerships to mitigate possible wellness and health outcomes, improve transportation infrastructure to improve public safety. The environment, continue improvements to stormwater drainage system, consider severity of storm changes when managing floodplain, protect and conserve land and urban forest health. Climate, prepare for extended hot drought, update and implement Grand County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mitigation Plan. Conservation, reduce fiscal demand for resources and services, protect quantity, quality, and delivery infrastructure of water, increase energy security, and reduce demand and cost, reduce waste by increasing recycling. And that all ties back to the presentations that the committee that developed the plan received that we're looking at hotter, drier, windier future. And all of those issues, the hotter, drier, windier affects our streets, to water supply to, as we've seen in the last few years, the actual severity of storms that we have. We've seen some horrendous rain that we hadn't seen in many, many years. Not too long ago, with freezing temperatures, we had a freeze that lasted for days and the state had a natural gas shortage. I spoke personally with the gentleman that orders natural gas for the state, he had never seen it in his entire career, and he is ready to retire. So that's kind of the foundation for where we got to this point. The action plan, employ new methods to develop and maintain a well-informed community. And that requires partners in a very large diverse group covering the community. Impacts from climate change can be mitigated more effectively. Enhance emergency services capacity to function efficiently in new extreme weather events. This will involve the many emergency service agencies we depend on. Support updates to emergency operations plan. Increase community involvement in fire prevention and preparedness. Sustainability does not necessarily mean how many solar panels we have. Sustainability, no matter how you use it, is a positive. We want to sustain ourselves, we want to be able to survive whatever comes at us. The resiliency is coping with changes, gradual increase in temperature and dryness, the disasters, many possible scenarios that could stop the supply flow, whether it's food, electricity, gasoline. Public-private partnerships are key, that's how we get things done in this community. The challenge is always finding the funding that the needed upgrades require. With emergency services, we're going to try to implement and provide resources for goals stated in the emergency operations plan. The, once again, partners are the emergency services and their state, federal, local level, county, we all have to work together. And certain tasks with educated citizens. So when we educate the public, they become less of a, less reliant on government to come and provide them and save them, and they're able to be a little more sustainable on their own. Public health, by strengthening public-private partnerships, we may mitigate poor wellness and health status outcomes from severe weather. Partners are local healthcare organizations, plan tasks, outside entities to strengthen initiatives that address income disparity, access, wellness, and employment. Use these collaborations to enhance other health benefiting plans of the town. EMS, increase reliability of EMS ambulances, partners are the local providers, and purchase new ambulance to ensure able to respond to increase in demand. The transportation infrastructure, and I'm just going to go over a couple more of these, is basically what we're doing and what I presented last, at the last meeting, was how do we maintain our streets, how do we fix our streets, how do we address the drainage issues in our streets, whether it's a water harvesting project or some other new engineering and technology that is available. Stormwater infrastructure is, once again, we have action plans to improve our stormwater drainage. The water harvesting projects obviously affect that in, hopefully, over the years and with the NIFOM out there, we'll actually be able to see a visible difference on Yankee Street and not just looking at meters and saying, oh, the meter says it's better. I think we'll see, visibly see a difference. The stormwater floodplain management goals are to perform floodplain management that decreases harm, increases benefit from potentially more extreme storm events. Preserve and manage the floodplains around town, educate the public of the methods and benefits of floodplain management, including importance in upper areas. So that's a pretty, pretty big stretch up from our upper watershed, which we don't manage ourselves, all the way down to our streets and creeks that run through our town. And we have actually, we've changed some stuff just in the last year. We've had to take some drastic and emergency measures when things happen in the streambeds, knowing that we have a potential for more severe storms than we've had. We've gone in and cut down or cut up and removed fallen trees in a matter of days using resources that we have not typically used for that. And that's all because of our awareness and our adaptation to the changes in our climate. The, I didn't go down and list all the different areas, but there's also action items for land and urban forest health, urban forest management, and we do have an urban forest plan. The drought, disasters mitigation prevention, fiscal conservation, reduce demand on, fiscally on where we've typically spent money so that we have finances that are available to respond to some of these other potentials. Water, quality, quantity, and delivery, I think you've probably heard plenty of that with the regional water system and continuing our upgrades on our wells, pumping, delivery, and storage system is ongoing. The energy reduce and save mitigate backup sources and waste and recycling enhancements. And just so you know, here's, here's the graphs that we have, and I have these all available in my office, that show the different energy use. These are the kilowatts in the city shop that have been used from 2010 to 2015, and we track those to see what's going on. Some of them, it's very easy, you can track actually by month, you can see the weather, and it just flows very, very easy. Some of them, this one, as you see, the cost has actually gone up. The thermes in the rec center has had a pretty sharp decrease. So some of the stuff that's been done, we can actually see and track, and some of it we haven't actually realized as expected. Public safety building, the electricity use has gone up. And I could tell you some of the light bulbs that were put in the public safety building had to be changed back because they didn't meet the safety standards. So that might be one of the reasons that we didn't actually realize all the changes. We did a bunch of changes in lighting at the museum, which will absolutely help our electric bill as well as the temperature in the room. There were some pretty, pretty hot light bulbs in the display areas. So we have all of that, and I believe Mr. Brown wants to talk to you about a pretty important and striking finding in this study.
You know, we were talking this morning about the energy use at, as we were going over this this morning, the energy usage, did the council get this? No. And I'll send, get you guys a copy of this, but it's a per month usage by each of these facilities between both gas and electricity. The swimming pool itself uses $22,000 a month in gas and electricity by itself. Over the four months that it is in operation, it uses more electricity and gas than any building except the public safety, the annex, and city hall for the entire year. So every time we want to extend an extra two weeks just to keep the pool open when school gets out and nobody's using it, I mean, that's a huge cost to the city. So I think this, this is really important when we start making those decisions about the special interest, the small groups that want us to keep it open for much longer than when the large groups, the youth and everybody's out of school and they're using it. It's also a decision-making factor as far as operationally, rather than just, you know, how are we going to save money? Well, yeah, we're gonna, we don't want to spend $22,000 when we're going to get like $100 in fees. So the cost-benefit analysis is huge when it comes to that. The other buildings all have to be open, but this is one of those that we really, I really have to take into account when everybody's asking for those extra weeks and months. The two weeks before and the two weeks after, there's another $22,000 in gas and electricity. That doesn't count the lifeguards. So I just wanted to point that out.
So to move down to the fun part, the successes and improvements. Emergency services in 2013, two additional officers were approved for Silver City Police Department. In 2013, we initiated a community wildfire protection plan, and that has not ever come to the council. And I just recently completed another review, and we will have to do quite a bit of updating on that. I'm hoping to bring it by the end of the year. The two rescue trucks were replaced at the fire department. Under energy, the photovoltaic array at the wastewater treatment plant was completed. The complete regional strategic plan, the 2011 photovoltaic system at the visitor center parking shade, the retrofit high-energy use municipal buildings. And along with these charts, we also have a list that we put together of actual maintenance items that need to be done. There is quite a few filling gaps in doors, windows, replacing doors, windows. We found some safety hazards actually with a part of a vent pipe on a hot water heater that was missing, which causes a lot of carbon monoxide concerns. So that was not on the list, it was fixed. Floodplain and urban management, continued progress on the green waste plan, continued progress on the green waste plan and trail improvements. The food, the Grant County Food Council was begun, and the common center was developed. Waste, numerous recycling enhancements, and I think all of you are very, very familiar with that as we approach moving into the automated recycling. And water, with the, we've developed a regional water plan, the water conservation plan, and we've seen the effects of the conservation plan in our pumping and drastic decreases in the amount of water that we're pumping, whether it be from unaccounted water or improved leak detection. And now, as was mentioned in this plan that was passed in 2013, remember that date? The installation of smart meters, and there was public input provided in the development of this plan in 2000, that was approved in 2013. We also did the irrigation system at the Ben Al Camerano baseball field, which is one of the very high users of water. So what does that mean in money? Additional town revenue that was secured through grants was $468,000 in EECBG, which is a Department of Energy program under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And that's where we did all the winterization and stuff in people's homes as they volunteered. The $50,000 for the water conservation plan from New Mexico Finance Authority, half a million dollars on Arizona Water Settlement Act, municipal water conservation, the Ben Al Camerano water irrigation upgrades, the meters and seem to be golf park. The community forestry plan was funded with two grants for $25,000, $6,000, $250 for the bicycle master plan, which is in its final stages, the $15,000 for the PNM Parklet at the Office of Sustainability. And if you go through the, this plan, as I said, they tied pretty much everything into this plan, so it's, it's almost comprehensive, but it's just doesn't have the detail as a comprehensive plan. The parklet has some alternative building materials that are energy efficient, and it was a demonstration project to show those off and let the public see there are other options. $83,000 for the USDA REAP, which is a small business energy audits that we're doing now. $4,700 for Earth Day Electronic Recycling and Document Shredding, and that's a, Freeport Magmarin has supported that for several years. The $253,000 for the recycling grants from the New Mexico Recycling Coalition and the New Mexico Environment Department for a grand total of $1,474,282 since 2009. And the Office of Sustainability played a key role in acquiring those grants. The town revenue saved, and once again, these are estimates, the $94,200 a year on the wastewater treatment plant, $3,000 a year on the visitor center, $9,700 on lighting upgrades at the municipal buildings, $15,000 at the Ben Al Camerano. And there's an estimated base, estimate based on 60% savings since installation, and $80,200 was spent for water in 2011 on those fields. $25,000 a year on transportation cost savings for Southwest Solid Waste Authority to ship the bales of recycled materials for a grand total recurring annually savings of $146,966. And with that, I will stand for questions.
I'll continue on his, his presentation a little bit because it has a little bit to do with his as far as my report. I wanted to talk about the meter installation project. Currently, we have been, we're about 99% complete. I gave you two, two graphs, and there are two different meters that were installed during the process. The one that has the long dark line across the entire bottom of the, of the meter was a, a meter that had a half a gallon per minute leak at a, a, a commercial, well, yeah, there was a commercial building that was never showing up on the old meters. So they were always losing that. And so when they, they got the larger water bill, they came and talked to me. We had a long discussion about, you know, why we did this, that we were losing all this, I was telling them, we're losing all this water because of the old meters, that you couldn't see it, and they didn't believe me. So I made them a deal, you go find the leak, if it's a new leak, we'll repair it, we'll fix it. If it's an old leak, you know what, then you've got to pay the big bill, M+ you've got to fix your leak. He came back today, told me he found the leak, and he apologized to me for arguing with me. It was, it was very interesting because he said, without this, I would have never found that, that leak. It didn't show up on the old meter. The only time he ever saw his, his old meter move was when he turned on higher volumes inside his, his home, but not this smaller leak, which ended up being about 19,000 gallons a month. So on this other graph that I, I gave you, it actually shows a much larger leak for a shorter timeframe. So it actually shows you within five minutes of when that leak started and five minutes of when it, when they repaired it. It was, it lasted for seven days, and then it was at 2, 2.3 gallons per minute they were losing in this leak. But then after that, you can see all the normal usage, it goes down to nothing, and then once, every time they use it a little bit, it, it, it is catching. So this ties, ties in hugely into this water conservation program, because now we've got this information, like I said, I, I educated this consumer, you know what, you've got a leak, and let's, let's find it, let's fix it. In this case, the consumer knew they had a leak, they fixed it, they just wanted to know how much they lost on that leak, and we were able to show them. So it's very, it makes it a lot easier to, to help the public see what their, their actions inside their home affects their water bill. And, and so, you know, it also affects, for instance, like in this case where the, the consumer, if they would never fix this small leak, it's going to affect their sewer and wastewater rate if they don't fix it during the winter month. it during the winter months, because it gets calculated into the, into their sewer and wastewater rate. So it would increase their sewer wastewater rate substantially. So yes, going back to James's presentation, last, last year, we went, we pumped approximately forty-two percent of the total water rights we own, down from sixty-one percent in 2006, when we really started working on this. But that also, that's going to give our, our water resources a lot longer lifetime before we have to increase our transmission capacity, our, our water rights to pump or, or any of those things. And so, you know, these plans, at the very least, they make you think and look and wonder and educate you, even though, you know, we, like in this one, it was more of a policy guideline than an action guideline. So.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Councilwoman Smith?
I actually have two questions for Mr. Brown. And that is that, these are wonderful charts showing research. And my understanding is that as we continue to upgrade and work on the system and software, at some point, any citizen might be able to come in and ask you for one of these.
Yes, actually, right now, if they come into City Hall, we can email them, or if they give us time, we can print them one.
That's great. That's great. Second question I just had, a citizen asked me this week. What's happening to all the metal covers that have been replaced by the water meters?
All the metal covers and all the old meters are going to be sold. A lot of the, the meters that we, that were taken out aren't very old, so they can be reused. So there's companies out there that come in and purchase the meters and the, and the lids. And so we're going to sell that, and all the money that we sell from that is going to go towards helping us upgrade our software system, which is very antiquated. The system we have now was being installed when I was a co-op. That's how I started, was on the installation, the trans, transition on the, from the triatic system back in nineteen ninety-six to now. So it's been twenty years that we've had this one. So we, there are a lot better systems. We've already identified one that we want to transition to. It's an upgrade to the current system. It's very good. It's got a lot of user-friendly tools, so the public can actually log in to their account. And hopefully, we can tie these graphs, and they can get them that way. So that is, we're hoping within the next year to be able to do that, because we're also going to have to change over our accounting software, not, not just billing software. They both need to, to move together.
Thank you. That's great.
Any other questions?
You know, if we can get the right kind of software and algorithm, it, it would be really nice at some point in the future, that when we receive our water bills, in addition to specifying how many gallons we use, there would also be a number that shows how much we've lost due to a leak. And that would be a proactive way of, you know, using these smart meters.
We can look at it. I mean, you know, right now, the way it's set up is we can be proactive as soon as we read it, tell the consumer. We're going to be doing that, hopefully, in the, in the short term, in the next few months. We've already been telling some people on the big leagues. But yes, we, we will look at that, see if we can find something to do.
This is great data.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you. Mr. Brown, is it possible to make some sort of a report to the, to the public on their bills, give them something like this, and ask what is used in a couple of months compared to other times, or?
Under our current software, though, we can give them these. If they request them, we can give them, give these to them. That's no problem. But until we get the new updated software system, our software system will, will do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Maybe in the meantime, we could get an article in the paper showing what you've discovered, and then tell them the public that they can come in and, and get this information if they don't.
Yeah, we can work with the paper to do something like that. Using these type of examples, I mean, a picture's a lot better than words most, most of the time. I mean, you look at these, I've been talking about it a lot, but, and I've actually seen these graphs a lot. But until I looked at them again today, oh, yeah, that's why we really went towards this, because it's a lot easier to, to see it.
Mr. Marshall, anything else?
Did you want me to talk about the staff?
Yes.
One more item that I wanted to bring not only to your attention, but to the public's attention. Our building inspector has resigned to seek other opportunities in his life. And looking at the rules and regulations and licensing through the state to become a building inspector, we, for one, we're going to need a building official. And those requirements are huge. So we're currently exploring what our options are. We have, the position is posted. After doing a review of the requirements, I highly doubt we will have qualified candidates. We will continue to hope that we do. We're, we have done some reviews on the state building permit application, and it does require that when you get a state building permit, you acknowledge that you are aware of and will follow the state or the local regulations, ordinances. So we have some, some coverage as far as the other items within our code that the state permit will help us cover. But it's going to be a big change for the public, and it will be a huge change for the contractors until we can fill that or make sure we have a good process in place to assist them in getting their permits done. And we'll do.
Just a quick question, Mr. Marshall. Did we post that on the New Mexico Municipal Lake website to try to get broader, a broader application base?
She's telling me no. I believe we had talked about doing that as well as.
I think we should.
There's also some industry organizations that we're trying to get it posted at as well.
And I mean, with the, I think that there's a number of individuals that go to leak websites that are not even in state that will check on things like that. So if, if we can, as part of our membership dues, I mean, I think we can post things like that. And there may be a fee attached, but it would be well worth it to get it out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments, Mr. Martin?
No. Yolanda told me I had to keep it short.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don't be that useless. I didn't want to post my ideas.
The next item on the agenda with any action is new business. And we have removed item eleven A from the agenda. Therefore, the next item on the agenda that requires action is eleven B. Approval, disapproval of bid number fifteen slash sixteen dash seven, Little Walnut Road Asphalt Overlay. Mr. Brown?
We've talked about this, this project for a while. It's part of, it's funded through legislative allocation, which is about, which is a hundred thousand dollars that we already have in hand. We received one bid from Southwest Concrete and Paving in the amount of a hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, plus gross receipts taxes. We need to add that, add that language. So the total cost is going to be a hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen and fifty-five cents. We, a hundred thousand will be paid from legislative allocation, and then thirty-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen and fifty-five cents is going to be paid from the street maintenance fund, which there's more than enough money to cover the cost. That's been planned for.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Brown? Councilor Edison?
According to the, the show we received, it says a hundred thirty, it's fifty-six, not fifty-five cents. So is, is what we have an error, or some of the bottom of?
I, I read it wrong. Yeah, it's fifty-six cents.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve bid number fifteen slash sixteen dash seven, Little Walnut Asphalt Overlay to Southwest, Southwest Concrete and Paving Incorporated, the base bid of one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. That will be increased to the total of one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents upon the gross receipts tax inclusion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second to motion.
We have a mo, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve bid number fifteen slash sixteen dash seven, Little Walnut Road Asphalt Overlay as, as explained by Council, Councilor Aiman Smith. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item eleven C. Approval, disapproval of preliminary budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen dash two thousand seventeen. Mr. Brown?
In previous years, we would pass the resolution approving it. It's no longer required for the preliminary budget for the last two years. So I just want your approval to, to send the budget in this way. So to start off with the general fund for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, projecting nine billion eight hundred and four thousand one dollar in revenue. And that is down two point eight percent from ten million eighty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars in fiscal year two thousand six, sixteen. We should meet our projections for this year of the ten million. We're very close, based on where we've been this year. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen expenditures are budgeted at nine million four hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, down from nine million four hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. I got my ups and downs on a few of these slides wrong, so I'm going to, it's, I'm going to be saying different than what's on the slide. It's a, it's a, so we're still a very flat budget as far as expenditures. We had a lot of savings from employee changeover, retirements, and things like that. So there was a lot of savings. We had a lot of savings from fuel costs because of the gas station, those types of things. So all of those things were, were changed over. Some personnel items were, as I'll talk about in a second here, we eliminated some positions. All of that was, was changed over and incorporated into the union stuff that we'll talk about later. Okay. And so, like I said, the union increases that I'll talk about later are all incorporated into this budget. And so what we're doing is we're proposing to decrease staffing levels at municipal court and community development, each by two FTEs. The municipal court had the judge and four clerks, proposing to the judge and two clerks, which is in line with what she requested last time. We, there's a little bit of difference in the operational, but we can work that out, I think. We have two positions that we're eliminating from the planning department that were budgeted. One was only filled for a few months, which was a secretary at the planning department. The second was Mike Ely, switches being housed and handled by the Southwest Regional Housing down in Demme. Okay. So we're not projecting to fill those positions. I am recommending increasing staffing at the parks and the streets department, one in each department. We already have funding budgeted for, for, for temporary seasonal employees already, but these are regular full-time throughout the entire year that I'm proposing here. So as you see, there are some changes departmental-wise, increases and decreases. And do you have any questions on any of those?
Any questions for the council?
Okay, now I'll go to the Water Service Fund. We're projecting five million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, up from three million, I mean, five million three hundred and five thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, a two point eight one percent increase. And now the rates that we discussed earlier, rather than the thirty cent increase for the two tiers that we, that we had, I'm recommending having, adding a third tier, which would be from zero to three thousand gallons, and recommending no rate increase for those three, first three thousand gallons. I'm recommending a ten cent rate increase from three thousand to ten thousand gallons, and a fifteen cent increase for, for ten thousand and above. There's, there's, the main reason that I changed from thirty cents to ten and fifteen cents was because I found an error, because I overbudgeted for energy costs at the wastewater treatment plant by about seventy thousand dollars. And it was because this year, I can't remember the piece of equipment, the solar rate at the wastewater treatment plant went down for about five months. So we had to purchase power from PNM. And we're going to see an increase this fiscal year that we're in, from two hundred and nine thousand, which we paid last year, to about two hundred and seventy thousand. And that's only for five years, five months of buying PNM power. So, you know, when James talked about saving ninety-four thousand, that's ninety-four thousand from before the rate change back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, when PNM combined back then, because there's been a rate increase since then. So we had, that's, that's a direct savings down, ninety-four thousand a year. We've also gotten an avoid, an avoided cost savings, because now we don't have to pay that rate increase now that has been passed, or any future rate increases for the next seventeen years. We're locked in to six point eight cents a kilowatt hours. So that was a really good deal there. So getting back to the budget, expenditures, we're budgeting four million three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, up from four million three hundred and three thousand point five. I've been very conservative. All of these changes and increases for employee salaries have been incorporated. And a lot of it is because we've had turnover of personnel, retirements, and again, those operating cost savings that, because of the, the fuel and things like that. And I see fuels are going to go up a lot over the next year, and the fact that we're also getting that additional savings because we own our own fueling facility, and then the county and the Solid Waste Authority are helping pay, helping pay the operating costs for the facility. So we don't have to cover the entire cost of operating at the, at the fueling facility downtown.
Mr. Mayor?
Questions for Councilor Edison?
Thank you. Could you talk about the out-town? If there's any increase, you kind of skipped over that. You just talked about the in-town.
Yeah, they, they got the same, the same, they get the same increase, and they get the, the separated tier as well. And rather than the double water rates like had been done a long time ago, I, we're doing the same amount of the increase. So it's ten cents and fifteen cents. So percentage was actually, theirs is a smaller increase than in-town, because they're getting, but they are getting the same cent per thousand gallon increase as, as in-town residents. And that also applies to the water associations. They get that same increase as well. And so, you know, Tyrone gets ten percent above what we pay. The other associations have their own rate, but they'll get ten cents added to that, and they'll get that added tier as well. Okay. And now the sanitation fund.
Any, any, any questions on the Water Service Fund? Any other, any questions on the water sewer fund? I appreciate you looking at that three-tier system very much. Thank you.
No problem. Next is the sanitation fund, projecting a small rate increase, I mean, a small, no rate increase. I didn't mean to say that. A small increase in revenues of, from $2,311,982. That's up from $2,307,278. Not recommending any rate changes. Over the next month or two, we are going to recommend changing the ordinance that pertains to the sanitation fund so that the rates are calculated on an annual basis, just like the water sewer fund rates. So that we look at the rates along with expenditures every year. And so, because when I first started, there was automatic rate increases annually, no matter what. I'm recommending, along with the others, is that we look at both revenue and expenditures every year and they both stay in line with each other. Okay? And then the, even though we're absorbing the cost of the automated recycling, remember our cost to pay the recycling contract is going down, so that's offsetting much of our cost to start the recycling collection. Expenditures are projected to go down from $1,000,000, down to $1,918,713, down from $1,982,792 for a decrease of 3.23%. Most of that stuff is not operational, recycling contract, fuel costs, those types of things. Maintenance, because we're going to have the new vehicles, things like that. So do you have any questions on that? I reported at the first meeting that we're maintaining the level of awards for lodgers' tax, which is $225,000, I believe, 250. I can't remember the number right now. It's $200,000.
Last year, right?
No, it's $225,000, Ben.
Okay, because something came wrong.
It's going to be the same. There's no, there's no, there's no change from last year.
Okay.
So on the last page I'm showing, showing you that our total budget across the board is $24,822,000. It's a pretty big budget for a community our size. We've had budgets in there that have been in the range of $32 million, down to $18 million that we've seen. So we're in the medium, the medium year as far as, as far as budget. Most of all these other funds that you see, categories, most of all that is grant or special revenue, those types of things that, and that's why I don't report them directly. Those are things that you're approving throughout the year. Or, for instance, park protection money that comes, is awarded from the state and we just, it supplements other budgets within the town. So with that, do you have any questions?
Council of Edison?
So this budget includes a 112 cash reserves?
Yes, as far as, the only fund that's required, required to have the 112 is the general fund. In product ordinance, we do have the 112 reserve that is required to be budgeted in the water sewer fund. And as you can see on the last page, we're about $89,000 above the 112 in the general fund. And, well, I don't have the required reserve, but the required reserve in the water sewer fund is like $420,000.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I was just making sure that we had talked about doing, that you started last year, implemented last year, would still be going on with the reserve.
Yes, we're going to continue. This is a very conservative number, though, giving balance of $500,000.
Right.
I think we're going to be quite a bit above that.
Yeah.
But I'd rather start low and budget that way than start with what I think is going to be there. Because I'd rather not show the money than, and everybody think we have it, to spend it. That's the only way we're going to see it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
That's all.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor?
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2016-2017.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Aiman Smith?
I second the motion. Stay in.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is item 11B. Approval/disapproval of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police Silver City Police Officers Association from July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2018. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, we've completed negotiations with the FOP Union, the Fraternal Order of Police, which represent the police department. For each of the unions, I set aside a budgeted amount, that approval of money, which during negotiations, we talked about how they wanted it allocated to their pay. In the police department's case, as you know, we pay 100% currently of their insurance. And they can choose from the Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO, Presbyterian PPO, and Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO. There is a $5,000 difference between the Presbyterian PPO and the Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO and the Blue Cross HMO. And so they were willing to, because all of them, all but one, I believe, had the Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO because it didn't cost them anything. And we have that budgeted in that, in this year's budget that we have. And so what they wanted to do was take the difference between the cost for the Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO and either of the other two plans and divert that money to their salary. They didn't want to send it to the insurance companies anymore. So what we did was, we agreed that the town would pay 100% of the Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO and the Presbyterian PPO. If they?
80%.
Okay, well, I've got those backwards. It was PPO, HMO, these. But the most expensive one, we would, we would cover 80%. They would cover 20% if they chose it. Now, the other two, we would still continue to pay 100%. So that created a $5,000 savings for each one of those employees. So what we did was we moved that money over to the salary side, along with the pool of money that I had set aside, which is about, was for each union, $70,000. And so with that, we were able to give them a $2 an hour increase this year and then a 45 cent an hour increase next year. And then this would be a two-year contract. Okay? And so although the $2 an hour does not increase equal the savings from the insurance and the $70,000 pool, remember that their PERA is 32% addition to the dollar an hour. So really, it's a $1.32 increase for each employee. So they've ratified it, they've approved it, and they're happy with it.
According to Mr. Brown?
You know, something else that's very important with this is that, you know, competition for qualified police officers across the country, especially in New Mexico, is very competitive. And this puts us up there with some of the larger communities, and it doesn't cost us a whole lot. And so my, our intent during negotiations was to keep our very qualified employees and to hopefully recruit, recruit qualified employees. Those are the people we want, which there's not a lot of in these states.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Do I hear a motion? Council of Edison?
I move to approve of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police Silver City Police Officers Association from July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2018.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Fraternal Order of Police Silver City Police Officers Association from July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2018? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed, let me say nay. Motion?
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, all these documents you like, expected to have one.
Motion passes. Next, next on the agenda is item 11E. Approval/disapproval of an agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME, Council Number 18, Local Number 3370, from July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, again, this is our deliberatory agreement with the ASME Union, which represents the blue collar employees. They represent a very wide variety of employees, from mechanics to street employees, parks, clerical, all those. So, you know, this is a little bit more complicated. In, every contract is complicated in a different way, but in this case, the union gave up some, clarified and cleared up some, some issues that we were having from a management perspective, some of those things being our call-in guarantee. The way that the contract reads right now is that if you're on call and you come in on, you're called in on the weekend, you get double time for that. That was not the intent. The original intent was that they get overtime and someone who was not on call would get double time because we want to promote them to come in. And we fixed that. Second is, right now, they've got 56 hours that they can take during the year without providing sick leave. We decreased that to 40 hours. Third is, they can convert sick leave as many times as they want during the year, as long as they have over 320 hours of sick leave. So they can, well, that's what, now, I'm saying right now they can. They can convert it as many times, and that was creating staffing problems. And that was just a mess up in negotiations. We missed that. And so now we're only putting it, the original intent was one time a year that they can convert. And then with that, again, that pool of money that we provided is, we offered them a 50 cent an hour increase over the next three years, which they agreed to. A CDL, a commercial driver's license, anybody who has a commercial driver's license that uses it for, as part of their job, currently gets $125 a quarter incentive. That's going up to $150 a quarter. Right now, we have no educational incentive for a degree at all. Both the fire and the police do. They wanted to start working towards something, so we agreed for an associate, they get a $250 annually. For a master's or a bachelor's, they get 500 annually. Their clothing allowance for the clerical employees, currently, they get $125 a year. It's going up to $200 a year. And then, again, this is a three-year contract, and I really appreciate that they were willing to go three years because I appreciate these things. So I had four contracts I negotiated with this year. It's nothing.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No. And they ratified this, and again, it will, it'll go into July 1.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Council of Edison?
I have another question and a comment. I'm pleased to see that you have done incentive for education. I mean, I think that that's really wonderful. We need to do things like that and glad the towns join with other, with other institutions that are doing the same thing.
Yeah, well, you know, right now, we do, we do have an educational program, so if they do go for their degree, we'll pay up to, I can't remember the number of hours, we'll pay for their tuition. And on top, so we'll pay for your tuition to get your degree, and then you'll get an incentive once you get it. Because there's a lot of value to that education for everyone.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
An agreement between the Town of Silver City and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME, Council Number 18, Local Number 3370, from July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Council of Edison, second. Any other, any discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. This concludes the business of the town council. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned.